We got anybody out there?
It's us.
Your staff?
So far.
Alrighty, if you don't call the meeting to order and if you don't have anybody in your room, the first item on our agenda is approval minutes of February fourteenth.
Ooh.
On August and second, amendments or changes to the minutes, gentlemen.
No.
Not hearing any of our favorite adoption, we're seeing that.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ones you can analyze. Item two. Assign the bonds for eleven point three, you got the paperwork going for that? We'll sign it, we'll sign it inside.
Here, can we sign those after?
Yeah. Let's go to item three. Bid waiver request, remember sign, we got a kitchen steamer that blew up, right?
We do, yeah.
Could you describe what happened?
Yes, so. There's a lot of things wrong with the steamer at this point, it's paid for itself three times over. It's been in place for twenty-five years. The electrical cavity was leaking significant amount of water and there was damage to the electrical components. It started smoking when the tech and I were right there and he was trying to do an initial inspection on it. And he said that it was a danger to the staff, they could have been electrocuted by it. And so we pulled it right out of service and we need a new one. He said that the amount of repair that it would require is not, it's not worth it.
Well, it's too old, one of the kitchen equipment, twenty-five years.
Yeah, one of the things on those steamers is if you don't have the proper water going in them for the jacket, they'll deteriorate.
Mm-hmm.
And you need a special, you need, and it, and the filters are expensive.
Right.
And is it filtered?
It's Dover water, so.
Or bad?
Right, it is bad water. And we are gonna be getting a filtration system for it, so that...
Okay, yeah, cuz that's, it's important if you get a new one to, to get a filtration system.
Okay, so it's, so, uh. You've got some, we have money in the capital budget, there's seventy-two thousand dollars in the approved capital budget.
For kitchen?
This, for kitchen equipment, the steamer wasn't part of it, however, what we would choose to do is forego something else and put the steamer in its place.
Yeah, that's right.
Probably was.
What kind of prices did you get on this thing?
So.
We gotta have it, we can't wait around.
Yeah, the best price.
Yeah, what was the best price you got?
The best price that we got is, it's just under twenty-two thousand.
Yeah.
And I feel that it's the best price for what we need. It's, it's just, you know, we, we're not like New X, we're not steaming lobsters all day long. So we don't need even as high of a, um, not a grade, but basically, it doesn't need as much of a recovery time for the purposes that we have. So we can even go with, with a more basic model than what's in place now, and it's a Cleveland. So it's a gold standard as far as steam goes, is what we've learned, and we have a Cleveland right now. And it's served us well, like I said, it's been there.
It is, it's pretty good.
Yep.
So who's the company?
The company is Singer Kittredge. And...
Any paperwork on that?
It should be right there.
So we did reach out to another company for another quote on this exact same model. We haven't heard back, but I did tell Kittredge that we were gonna pursue, um, just shopping around a little bit and they came back with a lower price than they initially had.
Yeah. Well, I've, I've got no problems, we gotta have her.
It does have a warranty.
Yeah, I want you to, yeah.
One year parts and labor.
Three weeks.
And five year pre-rated parts warranty on boilers and steam generators. Uh, three years convection steamer door warranty.
They're not cheap, I know I have one in my restaurant, they're not cheap, cheap, they're not cheap at all. Anyway. Okay, so I don't have any objections to this, I just, you guys have any questions? Any questions, I don't know, excuse me.
So, so where, where was this posted?
Who posted?
As far as the bids, is that just online?
We'll wave it, we'll wave in the bid.
I'm gonna ask you guys to wave the bid, because labor, it's nature, that's the time. No, all the other stuff, you know, is out to bid, but this is something that we can't, we can't wait. I mean, we've got to get it, and we use it every day.
Unexpected failure, so we're really needing it.
Yeah. Well. Well, um, they gotta have it, so.
Motion, wave, wave the, uh.
Bid, what an award to the Singer Kittredge.
Absolutely.
Okay, alright, move, move in second. Uh, in further discussions, any questions? Okay, then Chair will call, this has to be my role call, Commissioner Petrie.
Yes.
Commissioner Otis, myself, yes, the motion endless, okay, it's done.
Thank you.
When, when was this supposed to be, uh, when were you supposed to get the product?
Three weeks.
Three weeks, yeah. I didn't get that, I, I don't know if it was set, but I did, you guys have.
Alrighty. You got a list of upcoming?
Order it, young lady.
Okay, thank you very much.
No, thank you. You got any new business we are talking about right now?
I have something new. Relative to the, um, our grant for the cold weather shelter.
Yeah.
So, um, have put together the, um, request for reimbursement and the state is asking for an update, they needed an updated certificate of authority and updated certificate of insurance because so much time has elapsed since we, uh, and plus we have newly elected officials. So, um, this is, um, just needs to be updated. Um, and in the past, Deanna as the clerk has signed off on the authority to, to give you the authority to,
Right.
to sign off, and now we need to update it so Sean can sign off giving you the authority. It's just to update the certificate, so.
So you know, that's, we get a hundred thousand dollars from the state that we use to augment what the city's contributions to operate the warming center. Now, that's a two-year deal, it's gonna be this year and next year.
What are we doing to rehab these people? Anything?
Well, we don't, we don't, it's not designed to rehab, but it's, well, it, it's designed to just house them in a life-threatening, life-threatening weather. It's not, they try to hook these people up with existing services because we didn't want to create another, another group that was trying to rehabilitate these folks, so they have to use existing resources like SOS and CAP.
What's CAP doing, do they help you at all?
Well, CAP, CAP's been doing a lot, I mean, they, they, they hand out, they were handing out sleeping bags last I knew and giving, giving them some supplies. The, uh, and that all, that's all working in cooperation with the welfare directors in the cities, so.
And towns, don't forget the towns.
Yeah, there's towns, there's a few, there's a few from Farmington there. Um, I can give, I can show you guys the list, they just sent, they're supposed to send us an updated, uh, list.
I'm, I, the only list I got were the dates of the shelter work.
Oh, you didn't get, you didn't get the other stuff.
I'm just kidding.
If you, um, oh, that's carried forward to you.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we just give you the individuals or where they're from. Ninety-nine percent of them are from Stratford County, at least they claim they are.
The way you really check is, yeah.
No, it's not, yeah, and it's not, they have IDs, you know.
Guys, half of them don't have IDs and, and about a third of them won't tell you where they're from.
Right.
And the state, as much as we, we, we tried to coerce, coerce them for lack of a better term, they're telling us where they're from. But a lot of them are mentally ill, so, uh, you know, they, they'll tell you they're from Mars.
How many kids do we have in?
There's no kids.
No kids? Because, you know, towns, well, cities or towns, they, they're responsible for their education, you have to transport them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's no kids, we don't, you know, children. Um, so anyway, that's what this, that's what this grant thing is for. We have to, we just have to update it. Um, that, I usually meet with the mayors and city managers, uh, once a month, just to talk to them.
I'll have some.
About, about what goes on with it. And, uh, we'll be promoting it pretty quick, probably have one next week, just to get an update.
Well, if it's a mental thing, then, then we're not, we're failing, the state's failing on the mental side, which is, they have been.
All for a lot.
Hampstead was supposed to solve a lot of this.
Yeah, but it's, the state doesn't have the money to do any of this, I mean, they've spent a lot.
They got some money, they just don't wanna spend, they don't wanna make a commitment.
Well, yeah, they don't, so, you know, that's what you got.
Kick the ball down the road.
Just keep taking the can down the road. And, uh, that's the way it goes, so. But we are scheduled to get an additional hundred thousand dollars next year.
When, when, when does it do, when, when do you usually get the money?
When, when you submit.
We have to submit the bill.
We're going.
In other words, this is to get the?
Money for this season.
Right.
And then we have money for the next.
So, so the money goes from July first to June third. We don't, we, because of the allocation to us, we don't run a summer shelter. So we reserve our money to supplement the winter shelter. Um, so we need to acquire, uh, the backup from the entity that was awarded the bid to run it. Diane acquired the backup of which she put together in the format that the state is looking for. So now we'll get the hundred thousand from the state, we've already received the fifty thousand dollars from Dover and we've sent an invoice to Rochester to receive the fifty thousand dollars from Rochester. So that total sum equals the amount of the bid. So there's no county money spent
Right.
other than what it costs us for Diane's time to.
Which is against.
Who runs it, who runs the shelter itself?
Firm, not a man.
Yeah.
XL, ECR.
It's a firm?
Yeah. They, they received the bid, they were awarded.
They went up the bid and they, they got awarded. Yeah. So, and we, the reason why the county is involved is simply because we can draw the money down. That's.
Well, this hundred thousand is what represents the town, is correct?
Well, we, we, we we declared that that money.
Okay.
We declared that that money was the town's contribution, okay? But I just did that on our own. There's no, it's not, it's not allocated in that fashion, I just say, I just told the cities that the town's gonna use this money as the town's contribution. Um, you know, the majority of the users say they're from Summersworth, Rochester, Dover. In any event. The other, the, the bigger issue we're gonna have is when it hasn't, and again, the can's being kicked down the road, is Summersworth doesn't wanna house them anymore. That's the bigger issue. Where's it gonna go? We talked about funding it. We were gonna buy that, I was gonna, we, we talked about buying that, that's just a living facility that's been for sale up there.
And that's all, that's brand new?
Yeah, it's making that a shelter.
And the reason they can't open is they don't have enough people?
Right.
Qualified people to run it?
Yeah, so we looked at, we looked at that.
That's a nice, that's a nice spot.
Nice spot for, for permanent shelter. Uh, CAPS, CAPS looked at it, a bunch of other people have looked at it, but again, they need federal lawyers.
CAP, CAP tenants that come in and out of Farmington, you know, we, you know, they had their headquarters there for a while.
Yeah, he funded that for a long time, yeah, the county a long time ago.
But that, that would be an ideal.
You know, that would be, if, if we could figure out how to pay for it, that's.
Almost money, it's a brand new building.
Yeah, it's like a million eight they were asking for.
Million eight?
Something like that.
Well, it's kind of a medical facility, isn't it? It's a assisted living type.
Right, but, but the good thing about that is if you were gonna run a permanent shelter is that it has kitchen.
Right.
It's the kitchen setup, it's got the dining room set up, so it stops already there, you know what I mean? See, so, cuz you know, you're gonna have to feed these people, they don't wanna walk in everywhere, running around, the question's gonna become, how do you?
Awesome, yeah.
At least up until this point, there was some federal grant money and state.
Coast Guard.
The state, the state was funneling through this, this federal money for, for these types of facilities, okay, but that's all that's on hold.
Well, if they, if they, a lot of these people have mental health problems, and they, they should be getting more money for that, for that problem.
I, I get it.
I mean, that's their responsibility.
That's the state's responsibility to do that, but they haven't.
We gotta figure out how to squeeze some money out of them.
I don't know how they're gonna do that, I mean, the state budgets.
The money, one of, one of the problems with the state hospital is that they don't have enough qualified people.
Yeah, and they start.
We're, we're, we're short.
Same everywhere.
And that's, that's probably.
It's just the same, it's the same, it's the same thing, it's the same issue. And they, and they also didn't wanna put all the mentally ill in one place, which we used to do years ago. You know, people have mental health issues. We used to, years ago, we, we put them all in one place, because it was cheaper to do that, now we disperse them everywhere. And that's more expensive.
Why did they do that?
Because they said we were, we were, it was a
stigma.
Yeah, stigma, it was, we were treating them differently, they, they wanted to assimilate them into the society to treat them normally, like normal people, all this politically correct baloney, at the end of the day, I think it created great disservice to the mentally ill, you know, far as I'm concerned, by what they did, when they decentralized everything.
Are, are any of these violent?
Oh, well, they have tons, see, if they get off their meds, it can get violent.
Right.
Yeah, we get them across the street, Chris will tell you. Yes, we do, we get them across the street, which was, you know, one of the.
It's gets a brand new.
Yeah, well, that's why one of the, you, we, this has been true for many, oh, for decades, it's actually started during Reagan, and that was, you know, it was. The, the county jails became your new mental asylums. Okay, just like they were years ago. We, we've come a hu, we've come full circle. A hundred years ago, all the mentally ill were housed in camps. Okay, we had a mental asylum, we had a mental asylum, we burnt down, killed a lot of people, we got them buried up back up there. Okay, and the state, as a result of that fire we had here in Stratford County, the state built the state hospital. As a result of a fire here in Stratford. And the, the state took over the responsibility, because back then it was the county's responsibility. And now it's just come, it's just come full circle because
We still got a problem.
Because the mentally ill come to the county jails, cuz they don't know what else to do with them, they, they're raising, they're raising cane, they're back, you know, back at break here in your tool shed at three in the morning, the police show up, grab you, okay? People don't understand, what do you think, if people go to Neverland? I mean, they, they come to the county jail, the police drop them off and they become our problem. And so, because they're mentally ill, the courts look at it, that's why we have a mental health court, okay? Try to keep them on meds, try to keep them.
Yeah.
How's that working, I mean?
No, if it works great, the mental health court, it's, it's.
Once you get them on their meds, they're probably fine.
A lot of them, a lot of them are, sure. And the ones that are, that aren't, you know, we try to get them, you know, brought back to Concord, but there's not enough beds, Hassan authorized twenty more beds, never, never would could staff it.
Yeah.
The hassle is covered, could staff it.
We had a favorable, uh, ruling in federal court where, uh, if somebody had to have an involuntary emergency admission, the state, uh, the state hospital had a specific timeframe where they had to accept the individuals, that was a, that was a result of a filing in federal court, Governor McCafferty, uh, oversaw that.
And how about the, the, in the hospitals filing?
That's, that's.
And that's McCafferty's.
That's McCafferty's decision.
Yep, yeah.
There was two, two, NAMI filed in, in Superior Court.
And then they won.
And they won. And what NAMI won was, the state was claiming that if you're involuntarily committed, you have to have a hearing within three days. And state was claiming that if you were in the hospital awaiting the bed in Concord, the three days didn't count. So they had people sitting in the hospitals for weeks, you know, waiting for a bed, but never gave them a hearing, even though they were not free to leave the hospital. So, uh, NAMI, the National Association for the Mentally Ill, won that case. And, and so now the court's, you know, giving them hearings in, in the hospitals and everything else. The second, uh, case was brought by the hospital association, cuz they weren't getting compensated
Right.
for this time when they had, pretty much one-on-one, they had their security watching these people awaiting the bed. So they won that case, and, um,
They won the case, but, uh, I.
Well, what, the beds are, I mean, we took about twenty people, you know,
Right.
to free up, uh, beds both at Glenn Cliff and the state hospital, and it's really the same thing, just what happens is if we take people from Glenn Cliff, they just move from the state hospital into Glenn Cliff. So either way, um, you know, that was, uh.
I wouldn't make it on that rate of just one of them.
Um, trying.
Still waiting.
Anyway, I mean, the state's made us promises.
You got a lot, you, you got a lot of dynamics going on.
Problem is, the state doesn't have any money.
Right.
Shocker.
Well, they do have, but they're allocated probably.
Yeah, they just don't wanna spend on the, they don't wanna spend.
Well, VHS is the biggest.
The interesting part is, we're actually cheaper than, much cheaper than if those people were in the state hospital.
Right, right.
What do you get per?
About three hundred dollars a day. And they weren't bad.
How, how come? We get, uh, almost four hundred for regular Medicaid patient, right?
No, no, two, 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 what, two eighty-five?
Fifty-three.
Or fifty-three?
Yeah.
So we have to subsidize it. Because, you know, cuz I know how much we pay
Yeah.
as a, uh, paying customer.
Well, we've been promised, you know, Henry Lipman, who I've been dealing with for months, has promised us an equitable solution. So I'm hoping that he comes through with that.
But you don't need balances, what the feds give them anyway.
Well, unfortunately, I, you know, I, there was a state and county finance committee meeting where, but it was the day I had three budgets, three budget hearings scheduled, so.
And I was supposed to go and I didn't. But I can't, I've been doing it for twenty-seven years, twenty-eight years, it, it's the same argument, it's the same arguments, keep repeating themselves, repeating themselves, we never, we never can come around to somebody making a decision to, to do what we need to do, they just, they, they just won't, they don't, they don't, they, they look the other way.
Well, you can see what happens when you don't handle a problem correctly, YDC is the perfect example. I mean, you know, you, how much is it costing us now?
We had one of the guys in Dover, got a million dollars on it. And, and he ended up across the street.
I had one, uh,
You don't know?
We had one, one, uh, yeah, Sandy helped him get his money.
Right, a million dollars. And he's having a ball.
Well, he's been released from us, but he, uh, Sandy had to, uh, uh, work with, she had to find a bank that was willing, cuz it's not like we could just let him go to the bank and open a bank account. So she found a bank that was willing with that size of a deposit to come up here and open the account here. So.
So we get the, get the decision and couldn't put his money away?
That's correct, sir.
Wow, so who manages the money for him?
He manages it himself. And, uh, but. Plus the taxpayers probably half a million dollars, all the time we adjudicated him through the system for the last thirty years, and then, then he gets a million bucks.
Yeah, I actually think he got, the million was just a partial, a partial payment, and, and I think he's entitled to a little bit more. Uh, but we, you know, she got a call from his attorney and, um, so she helped him open his account or reactivate his account. And, uh, we got the money deposited.
Anyway. We're all set, were you Diane?
Yeah.
Except to sign the stuff.
I gotta sign the stuff, yeah, I'm bringing it inside, but. Give you any other whole new business we need to organize? Your logistics. Alright, questions or comments from the public, or you got any agenda? So.
I, I know that you had said that you were, um, gonna be meeting with the council about the warming, warming center.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm assuming that you've met, um, on a monthly basis previous to this, is.
Probably six weeks ago, it was six, six, seven weeks ago.
Okay, so, um,
We met.
How are things, in your opinion, how are things going this year, and do we have more guests, about the same, fewer, and just kind of?
Yeah, I agree, we're ready to announce, so you can talk.
We, we actually have, on the average, it's been fewer guests, uh, you know.
Perhaps in around sixty.
Yeah, six, sixty to seventy, um.
It creeped up when we had all this cold weather the last two days.
Yeah, well, the, the, the days in a row, I think, is what moves the average. The, um, I spoke to a Summersworth officer who works the shift that, you, you know, is, that it's primarily open. And, uh, uh, her indication was, even though there's less people, it's busy. Uh, they make them leave their, they search their backpacks and do other things that prior operators didn't do, but they obviously can't search their person.
Right, right.
So they, um, they've had some.
They've got a couple.
They've had some overdoses.
Yeah, because they can't search their persons, but.
Are they generally happy with the, um, people that are running it this year?
The chiefs of police have indicated to me that they are extremely happy with the way things have been running there this year. They've indicated that to me, as recently as yesterday. So, uh, but as Ray's playing out, we've had a lot of cold weather during the day. So they've been opening during the day, they were supposed to just be a normal ice shelter, let the smoke out at nine o'clock in the morning, but because it's been so cold, they've had to stay open, keep, keep open during the day, which Perry Plummer, who was the contact, their, their first line of contact, who's the chief of police, the chief of fire, fire chief in Dover, he's their first line of contact, second line of contact was me. But they haven't come, they haven't been able to come to me, I've talked to Perry a couple of times about things, he I said, whatever you deem necessary, you're the emergency management director, he represents the other three communities. So.
Yeah, I gotta, you, you mentioned some about Summersworth, like, liking the, having moved.
Yeah.
And how much, how much does the police have to respond to, uh, to the shelter?
We have, we have that.
Is that the problem?
One dollar.
A part of the problem?
They well, that and EMS, yeah.
Oh, yeah, well.
The ambulance service, ambulance calls.
Well, it's, it's, it's a drain on service.
It's a drain on services when Summersworth, like every other police department, is, is short-staffed. You know, there, I, I spoke to Summersworth officer who's used to work at the jail and, and actually is, is a friend of ours. Um, and she indicated that, I mean, she's, she's, they're working twelve-hour shifts, you know, because they just can't, they don't have the staff and they can't get it. When she gets a new staff member, she's a field training officer, so she'll stop by with a new staff member, just to introduce him, say hello. Uh, and she's brought over three new people in the last couple of months. So, and, and they're, interestingly enough, a little side story, last two that left them went to London area. The only reason that's interesting is that's where I came from. But apparently London, salaries, salaries are, uh, must be towards the top of the list.
So did you know of Alphacero?
I did not. No, I, I was just a local guy, didn't do any, uh, it was a long time ago, too.
So should the shelter stay close to Dover, Rochester, Summersworth, so we can?
What's that now?
Should we keep the shelter closer?
It, it certainly is easier for transportation, you know, with, with coast being so intertwined in these, in these, you know, in the three communities.
Yeah.
It's certainly easier to get people, I know that coast does go to Farmington.
They're very, they're very, uh,
You know.
They're quite on time and.
So, you know, there, if, if it went to Farmington, there still would be coast availability there.
But where will police in emergency?
Well, that's gonna be, if it's a strain on, on Summersworth, it's gonna certainly be a strain on Farmington. Right, no matter where it goes, no matter where it goes, so what happened was, we, we made an adjustment, Summersworth used to used to donate fifteen thousand dollars to the pot, okay, and we, we forgave that because they had so many, you know, they had police calls and they had ambulance calls, that they were paying for it. So, um, but there are multiple reasons why Summersworth is saying, Summersworth agreed to the initial, the initial deal, because we were gonna build a new nursing home. And part of building the new nursing home was to convert the old nursing home to use for, for homeless, you know, for shelter, okay? So when that didn't occur, then Summersworth was left holding the bag. Alright, so now they want, they have been more than amiable in terms of saying, you know, one more year, one more year, and simply because they wanted more permanency. Uh, they're trying to force a more permanent.
Uh, they're trying to force a more permanent solution, the problem is nobody, whatever community takes it on, um, is gonna have some associated costs of it, and then the question becomes, how do you pay for that? Uh, and, uh, it's been, I mean, there are ways to do it, there are formulas we can use to do it, that, that would be fair and equitable. Uh, but we've gotta be, you gotta have a site, you gotta have a place to put, and then work the formula into, into that once that's established.
And they have to have a lot of agreements.
And you gotta have agreements with.
What, what do you mean with the cities and towns?
Cities and towns, right.
I mean, the cities, what, what obviously happens is that, that ladies and gentlemen who use the shelter migrate to the cities because that's where the.
Services.
They can walk.
Those are the services.
They can walk to.
Right.
They can walk to. To the grocery store and Walmart or what, you know, and, um, if they're, you know, if they stay in their original hometowns and stuff, the, the services just aren't as, as close. So, you know, soon as they become homeless, they, they migrate to the cities.
Right.
And, and they also migrate to places where they can hide, or, or where the cities recognize the hour and leave them alone.
Right.
I mean, that's the other piece of it, too, I mean, there, I, the cities know where the encampments are, I don't think there's a doubt about that. And as long as they're not really causing any trouble, I think the cities just leave them alone.
Right.
Um, because if all's you're dealing, if you're, if you're rousting them from one place, all you're doing is moving them to another.
Just move them to another.
Well, Farmington's got a hundred forty acres for sale right now, so, right.
Does town have it?
No, no, it's, uh.
Privately owned?
Privately owned, matter of fact, a lady passed away and, um, it's, it's pretty good, good size, so, and it would be perfect for a rest home slash. So.
Why would you want, well, if you did that, it would all be nonprofit, it wouldn't pay any taxes.
Well, yeah, but see, you say that, but you're gonna have auxiliary businesses, like doctors, officers, or whatever, that will be paying taxes, which.
Other, well, they know the doctors, officers pay taxes and the others, not, not one of them.
Well, I mean, but it, it brings in other.
Well, I, yeah, I get, I agree with some of that.
And it brings the jobs in and what, you know, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Of course, that's a, you know, that's.
Service for another day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can I just clarify? You said that we get this hundred thousand dollar grant from the state, is that a hundred thousand dollars each year, or is that over two years?
No.
Each year?
Each year, from, from, from July first to June thirtieth, and then in June thirtieth, it starts over again. And, and they did commit, I suspect that it's ARPA funds. And, and so what they did is have, because ARPA funds technically needed to be expended by December thirty-first, however, if you have a contract, it can go for two more years. So they had to sign a contract prior to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, or actually, it was earlier in twenty twenty-four, to tie the money up for the two years.
So for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six?
Well, that's the way they call it, it's actually, it's actually July first of twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, and then July first of twenty-five to June thirtieth of twenty-six. If, if you ask the state, that's, the state calls July first of twenty twenty-four, their twenty, year twenty-five fiscal year.
Okay.
So, yes.
And then after that, it's.
Who knows?
Who knows?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, who knows?
And they keep saying, at least the, the talk in Rochester is that this is the last year, but.
It's not gonna be the last year in terms of their cost.
Well, it's not gonna be the last year.
But at Willands.
Right, right.
That's what's.
Summersworth, Summersworth.
Summersworth's saying.
But Dover owns the building, so.
Um, becomes more confusing.
Yeah, just ask another dynamic, everything, what's that building going on? Probably seven fifty, eight fifty in that area, it's a commercial, it's a commercial building, yeah.
Problem is, it's, you know, the end of a dead-end road, so, I mean, it's, it, 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 it's commercial in the sense that it is, you know, zone commercial, but in terms of, of it being something where somebody would drive by and look at it, and will say, I wanna stop there, not the case.
Right, yeah, yeah. Sell behind Home Depot.
Yeah, it's behind Home Depot on that, on that dead-end road.
City's got plans to, to develop the property adjacent to it. I always love when communities say, well, we have a plan to do this when it's somebody else's money, you know, it's never the community's money, it's, you know, it's the private sector investing money, so, um, but any event, uh, is, the, wherever it goes, however it goes, or wherever it goes, this, this, this has been this problem, the hurdle we've had for ten years. Nobody wants it near your, near town, nobody wants it in their backyard. Uh, nobody wants the, the headaches that follow it, okay, and so, uh, if it was an easy problem to solve for this complex population, somebody would have already solved it, or dealt with a long time ago.
So if that building got sold, George, would they commit that money to do something?
Yes.
Dover, the current Dover mayor has said that that was sold.
And city manager, yeah.
That they would commit that money to.
To another. Whatever we had to do to make it.
Yes, sir, that's why we looked at that Farmington assisted living facility, no one would sell that building.
And the church, in terms of.
With the church.
Church.
Two one one oh eight. Yeah, the, 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 the last church, it's up there across from Mike Davis's property.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that big green church, uh.
Yeah.
Um, but Summersworth, uh, the church was, had some kind of, some kind of crazy affiliation, so they ended up paying taxes. So Summersworth was concerned about taking that property off the tax rolls, okay, um, so, they didn't want, that was one of their pay. I, I said someone was just by the church, let's sell it, move it to the church, it's on one oh eight, it's close to the hospitals, it's, it's right down the street from Goodwin, you know, the, the Goodwin Healthcare, so, which is where most of these people get their healthcare, it's near Goodwin. It was right next door, it was on the coast from Bosh Room, but Summersworth.
They don't want it.
Well, no, Summersworth said it, not so much they didn't want it, they didn't want to lose the tax roll. So then we had to start to figure out, well, how can we help offset the tax?
No, yeah, yeah, they would.
They could do a pilot, right?
This is some of the other building, and, and, but it won't be equal, but it would be something.
Right.
They, they could do a pilot, uh, payment, lower taxes for five years, you know, to soften the blow.
Yeah, but the towns would have to contribute, the cities and towns would have to.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, that's, that's, that's.
Right, right, there's all kinds of ways to do it.
They do that quite often.
There's all, there's all kinds of ways to figure out the financing, it's just a matter of.
All in wear.
All in wear, right.
All in the church.
Right.
Do you know how much the taxes were?
Um, I don't have it off the top of my head, I don't, I don't wanna be quoted on a number, but we can look it up, it's, I don't remember what the taxes were, but, uh, I think it was assessed for one point eight million or two point two, or somewhere in that range, in a couple of million dollar range.
Some change, yeah.
Yeah, it was, you know, and tax, Summersworth's tax rate's what, twenty-two or twenty-four thousand?
It would have been, if, 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 if I'm just doing the math, it'd be about thirty-five thousand dollars in taxes.
Yeah.
So, and I'm just using my house as an example and multiplying it up.
If we built a building, what would the regulations be for this building? I mean, you'd have beds, a bathroom, a kitchen in there, right?
You'd have to have, yeah, you need to have some bathroom, laundry services, some toilet showers, um.
Is it regulated like a hospital or?
No, no, no.
So we could basically.
It's better.
Be tattered and dirty if we built something.
If you built a dorm, first of all, you'd want some form of dormitory style building.
Right.
You probably wanna be able to separate the sexes, maybe, depending on the nature of.
Have to be A B A compliant, that's.
Yeah, I mean, it, it could have first floor entry.
Which you'd wanna do that anyhow, and then just make the doorways with a rail.
Yeah, I mean, I, one of the things that, one of the impetus is for the new nursing home initially was that that, that we were getting, we were receiving pressure from the cities and towns to build a shelter here. And I said, why would, why would we spend millions of dollars to build a shelter on the county lawn when we have to have a new nursing home, it doesn't make sense. We put off to spend the money towards a new nursing home for people who pay taxes all their lives. And, and, and give them a, a new facility, not the whole one, and then take the old nursing home, and let the old nursing home act, and, 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 and in that capacity. Um, it was a good plan, it solved a number of ills that we had, you wouldn't have to worry about people screaming about, not in my backyard. They had Southeastern Hampshire Drug and Alcohol Services already on campus, you're already at, at the arms house, it was already here. The jails across the, across the driveway, we get the mentally ill anyway, we're getting them anyway, okay? So the question is, you would triage them out of the jail into a less, a less restrictive setting, okay? Expand Southeastern Drug and Alcohol Services to provide drug and alcohol services to those folks, which in my discussions with Crossroads at the time in Portsmouth, they thought that was a fabulous plan, because I want a Crossroads to run. Because they would then be able to take the, the assets from a business, just from pure business, okay? Take the two existing assets and balance families that are homeless versus the elderly that are homeless versus, you know, the work, the able-bodied men or women that were homeless, you'd be able to take the two facilities and balance those.
You could share staff.
Share staff.
Plus they had a track record.
And they had a track.
Unbelievable.
Right, they had a twen- ninety-two percent success rate in placing people and in treating people, ninety-two percent.
That's pretty good.
It doesn't get any better.
Doesn't get any better than that, so that's why we wanted them, I, I wanted them specifically, and I was pretty adamant about them, to run if we were to do that deal, so that new nursing, we were buying more than just a nursing, people don't understand this, okay, they just can't get it up, they don't have the meditation for it, well, they just don't believe in it, okay? Don't do anything for them, they're gonna die on the streets. So you've got those two dynamics going on, okay, but we were buying more than just a nursing home. You would, you would, you would, you would take, you would manage the population in the jail, you were, you were helping Southeastern Drug and Alcohol actually stay viable. Now they're, they're at a point right now where they're talking about being bought out by the mental health program here, by community partners. They would take money, well, community partners has some money.
Apparently, because they.
Yeah.
They're bought.
They bought them out.
They run them.
They're, they're starting to run, so you've got the mental health, Drug and Alcohol, it's already all here, the, the stuff's all here, okay?
Yeah.
Why should the taxpayers have to pay, again, to set something else up somewhere else, it makes, none of this makes sense, okay? If, if you look at it reasonably and rationally, but, you know, we can just forget all that, because reason and rations out the window, it's all about politics. And it's got nothing to do with solving the problem. Because from a, just from a sheer business perspective, the taxpayers should not have to pay two or three times for the same, to deal with the same problem.
Yeah.
The, the things, it needs to be centralized, okay, and it needs to be run in a manner where we don't have a revolving door. So we come to the county jail, we kick them out, they're back on the street, through the system again, we just keep revolving door, revolving door. Okay, we got all these nonprofits out here doing their thing, trying to do whatever they're doing, no one ever asks the right questions of the nonprofits. What is your success rate with these people, unlike with Crossroads, with ninety-two percent success rate? What's the success rate of SOS, what's the success rate of the triangle called, you know, nobody ever asked.
So SOS, that's the one down by the fire department.
Correct, yes.
And they want them out of there, don't they?
They did, but they went to court, and SOS won. Uh, the owner of the building was gonna tear that building down and put a brand-new forty-unit housing complex in there. Um, but they went to court, and the court ruled in SOS's favor because they had a clause in their lease that said they could stay there for only five years. I don't want anybody in that home, oh, nobody in that home, yeah, everybody's, yeah. Yeah.
Anyway, tax.
Yes, times up, yeah. So anyway, you got any other questions, Susan, so we can move on? Although I've been dragging this on pretty bad, but.
Yeah, you can, well, but I have to say that I enjoy because I learn every time I come, so, now I'm all set, and thank you for letting me ask.
All right, thank you, Diane.
No problem. All right, gentlemen, let's have a motion, then we go around public session.
Come on.
Second, commission of Petrie.
Yes.
Well, I asked myself, yes, okay, the commission will.